Tim, we good?
We're good.
All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, May 13th, 2021, time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Hornby, would you lead us?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic or which is them, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. For the record, we have all seven councilmembers here this evening. First item on our agenda will be the consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings, and to approve some work performed at our wastewater treatment plant.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items this evening, including the agenda, vouchers, minutes from previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor Flohox for the wastewater treatment plant digester number two cleaning city project SW 20-09, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor Flohox for the wastewater treatment plant digester number two cleaning city project SW 20-09, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three presentations tonight. The first is our Apple Blossom royalty proclamation. So which one of the councilmembers have that? Councilmember Harold, would you read that into the record, please?
Whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival has been a Wenatchee community tradition for 102 years, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival is a premier family-oriented festival that showcases our people, community, heritage, and fruit industry, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival royalty help promote this ongoing community celebration and act as ambassadors of our community at local, state, and international celebrations, and whereas Brooke Perez has been selected as the 2021 Festival Queen, with Cody Richards and Cameron Fowler selected as the 2021 Festival Princesses. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, on behalf of the city of council, do hereby certify, formally congratulate, and bestow our appreciation to the 2021 Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Queen Brooke Perez and Princess Cody Richards and Cameron Fowler. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of May, 2021. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Come on up, ladies. We got a microphone? You gonna do photos? You guys have never seen a microphone, have you? Don't know how they work? Okay, I'm gonna get these wrong. I guess I got the same one for all of you. So I'm just gonna turn it over to you guys. You can tell us what's going on. I know we're gonna actually have a festival, it sounds like, and we're gonna have a parade, and we're gonna have like a food fair, and apparently a carnival. So things are almost looking normal. Oh. Yes. Gotta say hi to all your friends at home on TV. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys. You can tell us what's going on.
Hello, I'm Queen Brooke Perez, and our festival is actually going to be June 3rd through the 13th this year, and our grand parade will be a mix of the youth parade and our grand parade for June 12th. So we are super excited to actually have something to look forward to in Apple Blossom, since we didn't really get a festival last year. So having anything at all is really an honor. We're super excited for what's to come. And thank you for having us and all that you do in our community. We are so happy to be here and be in person, masks or not. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Princess Cody Richards. I think we've all really enjoyed being a part of Wenatchee as it comes back to life. We've really enjoyed attending in-person events. We've got to attend a lot of first-time back-in-person events, and that's been a really neat experience. We're excited to see the community come together June 3rd through the 13th for Apple Blossom.
I just wanted to share my appreciation for this valley. I've been here for 10 years, and I've grown to love it. I've been, we've been learning about what makes Wenatchee special, and we've been able to tour a lot of fruit packaging companies and visit a lot of people who really make this valley great. So we're so excited to come back together for our festival. So we hope to see you guys all there, the 3rd through the 13th.
Okay, so we want to perform our song for you guys? We've done it a few times, we have some practice. One, two, three. Apple blossom, here we go again, marching on, festival in person. Apple blossom, it's getting warmer now. Sunshine makes the hills green again. Yes, we've been broken-hearted, blue since the day COVID started. But now the festival is going down. Apple blossom, now we're here with you. City Hall, thank you for all you do. So now we're planning tours and luncheons with you. Food fair smells in the air, shishka berries for you. What is that sound? It's the high school band marching on down. You'll see the royalty wave that you. Chairs are lining the avenue. Just one feeling of normality. Back together in Memorial Park. Oh, oh, apple blossom, here we go again, marching on, festival in person.
First time ever.
We have a picture.
I think that's the best song I've heard. It was really good.
Where's our picture?
There's one for you and your wife, and then one for the city hall.
Ladies, thank you for representing our valley, and we're looking to see you in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Coontz.
See you, guys. I might stay over here, because the air conditioning's bad. All right, we got two more presentations before we have citizen comment. The second is regarding Foster Care and Kinship Care Month proclamations. And I have that here to read into the record. It's a long one. Whereas, the family serving as a primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community. And whereas there are families struggling but providing care for their children and need support. And whereas sadly, there are children who come into the care of the State of Washington Department of Children, Youth, and Families every day for reasons such as abandonment, death of a parent, abuse, and neglect, and many other traumatic life experiences. And whereas in the state of Washington, more than 10,000 children and youth on average are placed in foster care annually. And the demand persists for more foster and kinship families to provide caring and supportive homes during difficult periods in the lives of kids and their families. And whereas children and youth foster, or children and youth in foster and kinship care range in the age from infant to 21 years old. And whereas these children often have unique medical, psychological, and physical needs. And whereas foster care and kinship providers give these children a safe environment where patients' kindness and caring can be experienced and learned, and where each child's life can change for the better. And where parents accept as part of their reward an opportunity to see their children develop, grow, and become a viable part of our community with stronger self-image. And whereas a network of foster and kinship families is a fundamental part of providing constant nurturing and support to children and families who need time to heal and put their lives back together. And whereas the goal is to reunify these children and teens with their biological families. And whereas if these children and teens are not reunited with their parents, these same foster and kinship families will often become an adoptive home or permanent placement, resulting in a greater need for more foster families. And whereas each day, professionals in private, public, and tribal agencies come together to support kids and families, working diligently to ensure safe and loving homes for children, and work together to support kids and families with the resources, support, and warmth they need and deserve. And whereas, community members are encouraged to demonstrate their respect and gratitude for foster and kinship families who unselfishly share their lives. And whereas during National Foster Care Month, we in the city of Wenatchee celebrate all those who have invited a child in need into their hearts and into their homes, and express our sincere appreciation for all who help make foster care and kinship care possible. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim May 2021 as Foster Care and Kinship Care Month, and urge all citizens to recognize the valuable service of foster and kinship families, and thank them for their service to children and teens in their community. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of May, 2021. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor. Someone here tonight to get this? Oh, come on.
Sure. Man, just thank you so much to the city council and to the city of Wenatchee for taking this time to shine a light on foster care and the need for foster parents. There's such a desperate need for good men and women to open their homes to these children who need a place that they can be safe and grow and thrive while their birth families work on the issues that the Department of Children, Youth, and Families are helping them work through. And just thank you so much. I appreciate it, and yeah, just thank you.
And the reason I chose to put that, or read that into the record is we do have some city employees who are fostering some children, and then I've got some people very close to me at my other office who are doing the same, so. That is not easy work. Last presentation is regarding Public Works Week. Who's got that?
I got that, sir.
All right, councilmember, go ahead.
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Wenatchee. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Wenatchee to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, to hereby designate the week of May 16 through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of May, 2021. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. Rob, you gonna come up? Got a team over there? Come on. I know, you got a whole crew over here.
I said you were gonna barbecue on Wednesday.
Yeah. Yeah, so thanks. Excuse me? Yeah, so Public Works Week, and we, this year, we're able to celebrate with our barbecue that we do every year, and we didn't get to do it last, last year. And so the mayor and I will be flipping burgers and cooking hot dogs, and all the crew, and all the, all the, all the staff, and council are welcome to come. It's on Wednesday from 12 to 1:00. But, and just, thanks for doing this. And it is really, these are the unsung heroes that keep the city running. If you think about every day, all the things, the thousands of tasks that have to occur to keep the city running, from clean water, flushing your toilet, driving on the streets, the paving, just on and on. If you think about all the things you enjoy, all the works, it's got a huge load to carry, and these guys do just a great job. So thanks for the council, for all your support. Really appreciate it.
They didn't introduce their chaperones.
Already signed. Oh, Keith has it.
Okay, thanks, ladies. You bet. So for the first time in probably 14 months, I know we have citizen comment. So this is a time where we ask any members of the audience that wish to address the council on anything that's on today's item or not. So Mr. Snyder, I see you in the background. You wanna come on up? Come on up, grab the microphone, or sit up here and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Snyder. I live at 34 Jennings Street here in Wenatchee. And I just want to say good evening to the councilmembers and the mayor. Thanks for giving us a chance to talk as community members in front of you guys. I'll make it quick and to the point here. I am here tonight just because, for a long time, and I know I'm not the only one, there's probably councilmembers and the general public who live here in Wenatchee that drive up and down Ferry Street. And Ferry Street has had a high, an increased incidence of tagging and graffiti. And so I've kind of put, been putting out feelers and some other stuff. And looking at, is there any way we could clean that up and get to a baseline and then maintain it? So it's just, as you come from East Wenatchee and take the exit over to Ferry Street and U.S. Foods, and you head up Ferry, you can just, it's just been obliterated. And what happens is, people will use a wide array of paint colors to cover up the graffiti. You can have blue, white, so you have that showing up on a fence or on the concrete walls going up there. And I just think that's a bad image to present to the public when people coming from, you know, down Quincy Way in the Tri-Cities, or people coming up for Apple Blossom. Not that we can do anything before Apple Blossom, but. So what I was thinking is to, there are possible options, ways to go. I wanted to know if any of the councilmembers knew of anything going on where any group or anything was trying to attack that problem?
So you're gonna want to talk with our chief, because I know our VIPS are doing some of that sort of pre-COVID. And now that COVID hit, I don't know how much they're getting together to do that. But our chief will be able to sort of get you, is that group out doing that now, back? Are they back to doing it? Okay. But there's a group of people that we can hook you up with that go out and paint and do stuff. Are they doing it weekly, chief?
Usually monthly. This is a general state, so we aren't very selective about the order of paint.
Okay. And you get paint donated from one of the local hardware stores? Okay. And all the equipment and all that? Yeah.
Well, I.
So I think you should probably go back there and sit next to chief and change numbers, and I bet you we can get you out there helping get that stuff cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah. And, and my point is, is not that effort's made to cover it up now, but it looks extremely tacky. I mean, and so I think that a universal concrete-colored paint can be used. And like I said, a baseline established where the whole corridor is painted, the concrete that has graffiti on it. And the same with the fences, that there's just a couple fences that get hit really bad. And, you know, a solid base stain or a consistent paint on those fences could be something to at least get back to a normal and then have myself or anybody go over with that universal paint and paint over it when it happens. So within, you know, 48 hours. So that is, I think, any suggestions or comments? I'll talk to the chief here, and I won't take up any more of your time.
Well, very nice to see you again, and yeah.
Yes, if anybody has any suggestions, comments, wants to get ahold of me, it's great.
All right, thanks, you guys. Have a good evening. Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either on today's agenda or not? Seeing no members of the public. We have a number of action items this evening and one public hearing item. So the first item is regarding the Reinhardt 60% annexation. So just taking that on behalf of the city. Is that gonna be Brooklyn, maybe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brooklyn Holton, Neighborhood and Community Services Coordinator. I have two annexations here. The first one is a Reinhardt annexation. This is the one along Skyline. And it is, this is the resolution 2021-10 is in front of you to set a public hearing. So we received a 10% petition, and that was, the boundary line was adopted. The legal description and the 60% signatures were both certified and verified. And so the county gave us our determination of sufficiency, which is required to continue moving forward. It allows us to know that we have at least 60% of the assessed value in signatures for the boundary area that was adopted. And so today, it is adopting Resolution 2021-10 to set a public hearing for May 27th, which is your next council meeting. And that would allow us to go through an ordinance and formally approve the annexation. Any questions on that one?
Will we get a boundary map at that time? I didn't see one in our packet today.
Oh, there should.
There's one for the, for the second one, but there isn't one for the first one.
My apologies.
It's the same as it was last time we saw it, right?
Yeah, yep, yeah. It's the same as that 10%, so nothing around that's changed. My apologies for, normally I have that on the other side of the determination of sufficiency, and I missed that. Thank you for letting me know that wasn't there.
It's that property in and around our water tank.
I recognize the addresses. I've just, it's always nice to see it on a map.
Yeah, yeah, and my apologies. I didn't know, I didn't include that one there.
All right, any questions for Brooklyn? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the city council approval of Resolution 2021-10 establishing a date of May 27, 2021, for a public hearing to consider final action on the Reinhardt annexation.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2021-10 establishing a date of May 27, 2021, 5:15 p.m., for a public hearing to consider final action on the Reinhardt annexation. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Will this annexation, will annex, does it annex any additional right-of-way into the city?
No, the right-of-way in front of these properties is already.
That's why it's on. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brooklyn? Hearing, none. It will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the Martinez annexation?
So same, they're at the same stage in the annexation process. And so the Martinez one is a single property with a sliver of like two-foot-wide county property that borders it to the north. And this one would be Resolution 2021-22. And again, the legal description is verified, and the determination of sufficiency was provided by the county. This is one owner, and they basically have 100% of the assessed value. So this would be to set a public hearing for May 27th at the next council meeting by adopting the resolution.
Great. Any questions for Brooklyn? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the city council approve Resolution Number 2021-22 establishing a date of May 27, 2021, for a public hearing to consider the final action on the Martinez annexation.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2021-22 establishing a date of May 27, 2021, 5:15 p.m., for a public hearing to consider final action on the Martinez annexation. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brooklyn. I will say two things briefly on, on items that are annexation-related that I would say in my mayor's report, but I won't now. I think the county is to the point where they are gonna put in a boundary review board. They were not too excited about that sunny slope annexation and the boundaries. So I got that notice from them. They also did bring us a revenue-sharing agreement, which staff is currently looking at. And I'm not sure it's got a lot of legs, but just a couple things to add on the annexation issues between the city and the county. All right, wastewater treatment plant belt filter press. Yeah. Got the team. That was Jessica today. And who do we have with us?
Mike Hodgson, I'm the wastewater.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And yes, I'm pleased to have our wastewater supervisor with us here tonight to help assist me with this presentation. So, yeah, and what happened to our audience? I love talking about wastewater, and they all left. Well, glad you guys are all still here. So tonight, talking about our belt filter press is kind of a unique piece of equipment that we have at the wastewater treatment plant. It's also a pretty critical piece of equipment. It runs every day that we're in operation, getting the water out of our biosolids. And about a year ago, we started having some mechanical issues with it and brought in a service tech. And so we knew it was getting towards the end of its life. Earlier this year, we had some pretty major failures of some big pieces of equipment, as you saw in the pictures. A very large roller, broken half. Thankfully, a local company was able to come and weld it back together for us. Not really sure how long that's gonna last, so we have decided to move forward with one of the options. And actually, what happens to be probably the easiest option and also the least expensive is to rebuild it. So the assessment from the Alpha Lavelle technicians was that the frame was in good shape. It just needed to be rebuilt. So all the moving parts that make up this piece of equipment are worn out. So rather than having to replace it piece by piece, we're gonna go in and rebuild the whole thing, and that's our proposal tonight. Unfortunately, we did not anticipate that in the 2021 budget. So tonight, we're asking that you approve the project budget, which will come out of our sewer utility fund, and then also the contract for Alpha Lavelle so they can get started on this. Did you want to add anything, Mike?
I'd just like to reiterate that it's probably one of the two most critical pieces of equipment in our treatment plant, other than the ultraviolet treating the effluent before it goes back to the Columbia. The secret of wastewater is to get the biosolids out. And without the belt filter press, we've had added cost of hauling it either to the landfill or the alternate Boulder Park being Class B solids.
So in the interim, what's gonna happen? Because this is gonna be out of commission for a while.
It's gonna be out of commission for two weeks, and we're gonna have a rental unit come in. And we'll probably end up with Boulder Park again, Class B solids.
So we'll have to haul more that way, because we've got.
Yeah, shouldn't be too much. Two weeks, it'd be around 150 tons of biosolids.
Okay. That place continues to amaze me. I still don't understand all the stuff that goes on down there, but.
Come on down there.
I've been there a couple of times and it just, again, it baffles me.
You're all invited.
That we make that.
Been there.
Been there.
Been to this, been to tour, but like you said, we don't understand what we're looking at.
That was you doing it.
All right, any questions for either Mike or Jessica? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to just throw a couple of questions out here. How long has this been in, this particular unit been in service?
Since nineteen ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one, okay.
Every thirty years, thirty years.
Yeah, yeah. I assume we got our, got our money's worth at this point, okay. I guess I just, in, in looking at this, and I'm not questioning your judgment, it's just, just I guess more of a curiosity thing, but we're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand to do this and a new one is five hundred.
Yes.
Is there, would there be any advantage to buying a new unit versus the rebuild?
I think at this point in time, it may be more challenging for us to buy a whole new unit. And we would then have the disposal cost for the frame, and the frame, we've been told, is in great condition. There's really no need for it. So we feel like the quickest way to get this problem resolved and to get us back to basically a new piece of equipment is to do the rebuild. And it's the least expensive of the options.
Yeah.
So what we're finding now in the world of wastewater and, and other areas too, is that parts and new equipment, just like Aaron shared, buying, buying new equipment is really tough these days, is a really long lead time. And so we, we're even trying to find that piece of equipment to rent. We may be renting alternate pieces of equipment that do the same thing, just to get by while we rebuild the belt filter press.
In addition to that, is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of control panels, not only for the belt filter press, but also the gravity belt thickener.
Okay.
Which is in the secondary wasted activated slug.
So if you bought a new one, you would have to redo all that?
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, and the electrical components, literally you have to go on eBay to find them right now.
Yeah, but those controls, new controls things, that's part of the, the three fifty price that we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We'll have new by the time we're done.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Jessica or Mike? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the project budget and the contract with Alpha Laval Inc. and authorize the mayor's signature for the wastewater treatment plant belt filter press rebuild, project number twenty-one zero eight.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the project budget and contract with Alpha Laval Inc. and authorize the mayor's signature for the wastewater treatment plant belt filter press rebuild, project number twenty-one oh eight. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
All right, so next up is North Wenatchee Avenue building demolition and then City Hall redevelopment. So we'll get the, the city team up here and Aaron and Alyssa and Brad will be here for some of it. I don't know which part, but.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager.
Alyssa Webb, or, excuse me, Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager, Public Works.
Both of the next two action items, we request to strike the eight point five percent in the action item as, and just leave it as the Washington State sales tax. As in July, the tax will go up to eight point six. So our air apologized for that.
All right, let's take on the first one.
Right, Mayor, Council. The North Wenatchee Avenue Building Demolition Project is City Project Number seventeen twelve. It's the next step for the development of the Columbia Avenue. This particular portion of work includes the hazardous material removal and demolition of the buildings located at fifteen fifty-one North Wenatchee Avenue, also known as a former WashDOT administration and service buildings. This project went out to bid May fourth, where a bid was received from Ascendant LLC out of Puyallup, the same contractor who successfully removed the Northwest Wholesale Buildings back a year ago. Their bid price was nine hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred eight dollars plus tax. This is within the project budget and consistent with the scope of work, with approximately fifty percent abatement and fifty percent demolition. If approved, this project is projected to commence next month with a forty-five working day construction schedule. Staff recommends that council approve the project budget, authorize the mayor to award project number seventeen twelve, and sign the construction contract with Ascendant LLC for the amount of nine hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred eight dollars plus tax. Are there any questions?
So we were obviously disappointed that we didn't get more than one bid. We would hope to have had more, but staff did look at the amounts and numbers and felt they were reasonable, given the bidding contracting, they were within. Matt had done a pretty extensive look before he left and he was thinking nine fifty was the number, would have been our estimate. So again, you always want more than one bidder if you can get it, but in this instance, we feel like the number is in the right spot. We're anxious to get the buildings down. WashDOT is ready to do some of their environmental work behind the shop, but they don't want to do it until the shop's gone. And so we're waiting, they're waiting for us to get the buildings down so they can go do their environmental work. So we really, seems like this is the right time to get it done. We got developers sort of kicking tires out there, but I don't think they see the true vision yet until those buildings are down and you can see the expanse of the property that's there. So again, would have wished we would have gotten more, more bidders. Ascendant was the one that tore down the building at the college and then came and did our, the Northwest Wholesale stuff and did great work and were very responsive. And so they're, they're clearly quality people and do, do great work. So I think it's staff recommendation in mind that we go ahead and, and get this thing started.
My question is, why is it gonna take forty-five days?
The asbestos abatement piece is a, a large scope of work on the two buildings both.
Alyssa was saying they gotta remove the roof, because it's all asbestos before they can tear it down. So they gotta, roof's gotta come off and that's gotta get, I'll be interested to see if they dispose here or if they drive it back over the mountain pass like they did when they did the Northwest Wholesale Building. Yeah. Because it's too expensive to dump out there. So it'll be interesting to see what they, what they decide to do.
Thank you.
Excuse me, you said that, that in the, the price tag, that about half, half is demolition, half is, is abatement.
Correct.
On that. And that, we're doing both, both buildings. We're doing the shop and the, and the admin building and so. Yeah, that's quite a price tag for hearing something.
I've, I've learned a little bit and love Steve King to death, that he was about half price on most of his estimates. So he always said this was about a half a million dollar deal. So if he said a half, I'm gonna say a million and it's sort of right in that range. So it just seems to be the way it's working out.
He knows some ways to get it cheaper.
Yeah, but again, this.
Well, he was right if there wasn't asbestos.
Yeah, yeah. But those buildings built in the forties are gonna have asbestos, so.
And remind me what our property is worth out there once these buildings are down?
Oh, boy. Some of it's thirty bucks a foot, some of it's probably fifteen bucks a foot, so somewhere around five million bucks, something like that.
More than, more than pay for the extra expense.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Again, overall, when we get all the way through this, I anticipate that we'll probably be in the red a little bit on this whole project versus the black, but again, we're continuing to get money passed through for the state to help with the road projects and some of those sorts of things. So we're, we're continuing to plug away at it. We got some money from the PUD to help with some stuff and so we're, we're, we're getting it. But the people that are looking want to see the buildings down and they want to see the intersection built. And, and then we're gonna get some action. So we're, this is, this is sort of, this is the first step. And we did a year or so ago, when we went out to ask if anybody wanted to buy the buildings as is, and we went out for a public and nobody wanted them. We even offered to, if you tore down part of the building, we would give you a better price, and we had no takers. So I think we've done enough to show the community that if we were trying to save it, we, we could have. But at this point, I think it's time for them to come down.
Well, Your Honor, I'd make a motion, excuse me, make a motion that the City Council approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to award project number one seven one two and sign the construction contract with Ascendant LLC for the amount of nine million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and eight dollars plus eight point five Washington State sales tax.
Second.
Or eight point six after July one.
Yeah. Right, so a motion by Councilmember Bailey and a second by Councilmember Cuevas to approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to award project number seventeen one two and sign construction contract with Ascendant LLC in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and eight dollars plus Washington State sales tax. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. City Hall redevelopment. Come on up, Brad. So obviously Travis was the lucky one to, you know, when I opened up bids, we got awful. And then I said I wouldn't show up and Travis came in and the first two were really high and he said, let me start opening up the envelope. So we got three right at about the same number and, and this is the lowest one. So Aaron, Alyssa and Brad, it's all yours.
Well, we're excited to be here to actually present the bid proposals that came in last week. Thank you, Councilmember Hornby, for your assistance.
You're welcome.
A quick recap, back in two thousand seventeen, three oh one Yakima was purchased and the plan was set in motion to convene as much of the city administration team into one location as possible. The third floor and this, and this chambers were remodeled and temporary quarters were made for City Hall to move from one twenty-nine South Slant, excuse me. The new City Hall design process was completed in the spring of twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty, and the first bid took place in July of twenty twenty. The result, the bids were over budget and the, all bids were rejected. Financially for the city, twenty twenty turned out to be a pretty good year. So we reevaluated at the beginning of twenty twenty-one and decided to go back out for bid. Last week, we received five proposals for the work transforming the first floor and the mezzanine level into the new Wenatchee City Hall. Bids came back better than expected with a tight spread between the contractors. T W Clark Construction from Spokane was a low bidder with a base bid of eight million three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars plus tax. There were also two additive alternates, one for skylights in the amount of two hundred ten thousand dollars and one for pavement replacement for sixty, or fifty-nine thousand dollars, bringing the total to eight million six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars plus tax. A decision to move forward on this project would result in an increase of just over two point four million dollars to the original budget. It's important to note with the volatile construction material market we are currently experiencing, the decision regarding our path forward should not be delayed. The current bid has a short shelf life with regard to supplier pricing. In some cases, we have less than a week remaining to secure bid numbers. The project could commence as soon as next month with an eleven-month construction window.
Yeah.
Staff recommends that City Council approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to award project number seventeen sixteen and sign the construction contract with T W Clark Construction LLC for the amount of eight million six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars plus tax. I'd like to invite Brad to.
Yeah, come on up, Brad.
Sure. As, as Alyssa mentioned, back in July of twenty twenty, when we received the bids, we were in the, in the thick of the uncertainty of the COVID economy. And so between not having a clue what twenty twenty was gonna look like, we were thinking the general fund was gonna end up losing a million and a half or more at that point in time. And with the high bids, I believe those are some of the main reasons why this project, the bids were, were pushed off until, until this year. So once we went back out to bid and we received pretty decent bids compared to the prior, the prior bidding environment, and looking back, once we saw how twenty twenty wrapped up, twenty twenty actually ended up, ended up growing our general fund by two point three million instead of losing one point five million as we expected, because while the economy was very slow in the spring of last year, it really, it, it caught up and it made up for, for the, for the losses in the general economy in the last half of the year. So we grew the general fund by two point three million last year. Early this year, we had a sale of water rights to the regional water utility, and that brought in another one point one million into the general fund reserve. And as things look like they're, the economy looks like it's continuing to, to move as it was the last half of last year, I would expect that our general fund will actually grow by another million on top of that. So I, I expect that we will end up with four point four million additional reserves at the end of twenty twenty-one than we had at the end of twenty nineteen. So with that in mind, as Alyssa mentioned, this project is now about two point four million, it's costing you two point four million more than what was originally planned. And at, so I guess I'm, I'm really here to say that we have the money to be able to, to finance that extra two point four million. We have, we will have, we'll end up having more than what we need to finance that two point four million.
And we've got contingencies built in here. We've got, I see testing and, and all the other stuff that goes on and the art fund and moving and furniture, and so there isn't too many things in your total budget that we haven't thought about.
Yeah, we feel pretty confident in this amount to be able to get it to the finish line.
Good. Well, I, I can say that you guys are all brilliant, City Council, by rejecting out the last bids and getting better bids. I think a lot of this was a little bit of luck and a lot of this was staff really working hard to tweak the design in a way that I got the prices down and, you know, two million dollars less in ten months in, in a tough bidding climate. I mean, these guys did a great job of, of working into a number that's good. We're familiar with T W Clark, they did the work here, they built the fire station for the fire department, so we're comfortable with the contractor. There was three bids that were all within a couple hundred thousand dollars of each other, so you feel like you got sort of the range of numbers, seemed like it, there's a number of folks that thought they could bid it in this sort of, this spot. So I think it gives you confidence that, that we've got numbers that sort of work. So I'm, I'm like, this was the plan four years ago and we're, we're in shape where we can get this done. So any questions for any of the team up there or someone want to put a motion on for discussion? What's the, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'll, I'll put a motion on the, on the floor. I'm gonna make a motion that the City Council approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to award project number one seven one six and sign the construction contract with T W Clark Construction LLC for the amount of eight million six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars plus Washington State sales tax.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve the project budget and authorize the mayor to award project number seventeen sixteen and sign the construction contract with T W Clark Construction LLC for the amount of eight, eight million six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars plus Washington State sales tax. Discussion? Sure you all have something to say?
I've got quite a bit, so I'd like to start if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead, Keith.
So I know not everybody was on council when we started this process, and I want to kind of go back and remind everybody that when we first started this, the budget was significantly lower. And we ended up acquiring more of the building that we hadn't planned on. We ended up spending three point six million on the building when we had originally planned on only spending maybe a million, million and a half. So every time we've turned around, this project has increased in cost. So we finally came up and said, okay, we can live with this fourteen point five million budget. Let's get it done for this price. Today, we're looking at still two point four million dollars more than that price. Now, when I was elected, I felt like I was elected to be a good steward of the public's money. And to me, I don't think we're doing a good job here. I know staff has worked really hard to try and make this all work, but I still think that just because we're over budget, we haven't done our due diligence to find ways to cut costs. You know, if I'm gonna build a house as a public citizen and somebody came in with bids that were way over what my budget was worth. bids that were way over what my budget was worth, I would have to find a way to either build a smaller house, use less quality materials, or something to get me down to what my budget is, or I'm going to have to work harder and find more money to make that work, but it's going to come out of my pocket, not out of the public's pocket. So, I still have a problem with being over the budget that we finally settled on of 14.5 by 2.4 million dollars. I just don't think that we have done enough to find ways to save money on that. That's my comments.
Anybody else wish to make any comments before we vote? Hearing no other comment.
Yeah, I'm going to respond to that. And Keith, I appreciate your concern, and I, you know, I was not a big, you know, a fan initially of this project and buying this facility. As I've often said, when I first had a look at this thing, it reminded me of buying an aircraft carrier. There's just a lot of, it's a big facility, and with that, it incurs, you know, additional costs and staff and maintenance and all those other kinds of things that go along with that. But I guess I sort of come to the position that this is one of those projects that, and while it's over budget and we have gotten it down from what we had last year and so forth, is still considerably more than what we had initially thought. Two years have elapsed, and materials and all those kinds of things have changed, and that's probably not going to change. I'm not sure that we could go out to bid at some point in a year from now and come in with a figure that's under this. So, with that said, I think the other thing that I, I guess I'm feeling better about and why I would support this is that, you know, we have had a good year financially as a city in spite of COVID. And in fact, the sale of the water rights that we acquired from the...
Lineage.
Lineage operation, that one just kind of fell into our laps. We didn't really have to do anything to get that, and that was approximately, what, a million and a half?
Million one, yeah.
Million one. So, at this point, I guess I feel like this is one of those projects that we're making an investment for the community for a long time to come. We're not going to go out and find a piece of property somewhere and build a new city hall that would give us, you know, a better deal, you know, and it would cost us a lot more to build brand-new from scratch, you know, that kind of thing. So, I support this. I realize that we're taking a big step, but in my mind, this is City Hall for the next 50 years, and I think that's a good investment for the community.
I don't disagree with that, Jim, and I know we did come into some money that we hadn't expected, but we also have roads that need to be upkept. We have a convention center that still needs a bunch of money, and we have some debt we can pay off. To me, that 2.4 million would be better spent doing those kind of things. If you look at this building today, there is not one city employee who cannot do their job with the building the way it is right now, is there? So, what are we actually going to accomplish other than to make a big, pretty building to say, "This is our City Hall"? And if I'm Joe Blow taxpayer, I could care less if I'm still driving through potholes, but I've got a beautiful City Hall.
Yeah, I'll defend the, you know, when we look back in 2017, when we made the decision to purchase the top floor, a bunch of us, not many people in this room, but I know myself and a bunch of the city employees, we went and toured four or five new city halls over on the other side, Kenmore, four or five. Ruth, were you with us in that?
Yes.
Yep.
Brand-new Kenmore City Hall, two years old, and they didn't have enough room. Totally full, and they were looking to figure out how the hell they're going to get more space. So, when we looked at this building, we thought, "Do we, we're going to buy enough so that we don't have to get cramped ever, and we'll lease out what we don't need, and this will be City Hall for 50 years whether we have 185 employees or 300 employees, right? We have enough room in this building to expand." That was the biggest complaint from these places we went, is we didn't build the dang thing big enough. We didn't build the dang thing big enough. And so, we weren't going to make that mistake. And so, we have a second floor and a third floor that are going to be open, and we're going to be able to lease some of that space out. You know, the plan always was to remodel the main floor, get as many of the folks in there as we can, give our community a one-stop shop for getting building permits and paying their utility bills, and all the stuff that happens when you have as many of your employees in as one spot as possible. And I think that was the plan, was also to try to, you know, make sure that this building was full so that this part of our community, which is sort of the start of South Wenatchee, is going to have a bunch of people working here, and we can help transform the neighborhood. So, there was a lot more into this than, you know, how many cubicles can you fit? And, I mean, there's more to this. It's a bigger play than just how many employees do we have and how much space do we have. So, I think, listen, when you're planning for 50 years, sometimes you get it right, sometimes you get it wrong. I think this is one that is, you'll look back in five years or 10 years, and you'll say, "Glad we made that choice." And we have worked hard on the financial side, right? When we saw the bids come in last year, and we were over by quite a bit, I mean, my staff will tell you, my job was to figure out how we're going to get enough money together so we can get this done. I never thought we'd see 8.6, quite frankly. I thought we'd see more than that. And we've actually got some other ideas on some things that we can do to sort of help the general fund as we sort of go forward. So, the risks to the city are very, very low. I think if you're looking, you know, 20, 30, 40 years down the road, this is the right decision to make. The bids are as good as they're going to get. I defend the reason why we bought all this, you know, bought the extra space, because someday someone's going to be really glad we had it, and they're going to look back and say, "That was a smart move when the council bought the top floor." So, anyhow, I think it's sort of the right thing to do. And there was a lot into those decisions, and we sort of forget what they were back in 2017 and in 2016 when we were making those sorts of decisions.
I echo Councilmember Bailey's comments and Mayor Kuntz's comments, but I will also add something that Mayor Kuntz forgot to say. Those buildings that we went to see in the Seattle area, those were worth, well, to build them, the cost was like 25 to 30,000 million dollars.
Yeah, they were 20 to 30 million dollars, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in there. So, if we're over budget, you know, by 2.5 million right now, I'd rather pay those now than pay 25 to 30 million dollars, you know, in two to 10 years from now.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather pay what we have to pay today.
And the other thing we did, and good on, you know, I've been bashing Steve King, good on Steve King, we made these condos, right? You want to sell the top floor when we're built downstairs, we can sell it. Top floor's probably worth a couple million bucks. I mean, I don't think we need to, and there's no reason to, but you can always turn around and flip it if you wanted to, but there's no reason to, because I think, and you know what? I wouldn't, the last building that was built, the old City Hall, I think someone saw the old plans, and they had all these windows and stuff in them, and then the city got cheap, right? And they cut all the costs out of it, and what do you get? That wasn't a very great City Hall, right? It's not a place that anybody could be proud of, right? This is going to be a nice building, and I think the community will be proud of it, and you'll be proud of the City Council members for working out of it, and the staff will enjoy working there. And again, to me, it's more than just an office building for city employees. It's a community place.
Your Honor, I have to agree with what Councilmember Bailey and Councilmembers Sparza and yourself said. I think to wait, to try and pick it apart and cut prices again, we're going to end up spending more in the long run. I respect what you said. You have some very valid points, but the costs are just going to go up if we wait, and I don't think we can. And this is a vision for the next 50 years. We have to remember that, and we need to move forward with it. The ship has sailed. It's too late to back out now.
As one of the new guys, that Jose and I, I don't want to step on the decisions that were made in the past. I appreciate Keith's approach to the money and looking at the numbers and always bringing us back to a harsh reality of what those mean, and so I do appreciate that. I watched a TV show that said, "What would it cost to build it now?" So, we do have something that overall budget is more, but in two years, five years, it's going to cost more. That's the reality of these things. So, I supported the fact that the decisions that are made in the past got us down this road, and moving forward, it's not going to get cheaper.
I just want to say I concur with Keith. Being new here, I mean, I don't know about the past. I can't predict the future, because, I mean, this is new to me. I can speak for myself as a business owner, and when I built the business, I also had a few bid people to come and do it, and it's expensive. What worries me is that when we give a price out, and they're working on construction, and something happens, or digging, and they find something else, are we going to spend more? Or the price is the price? Because that's, I don't want to go any, spend any more, oh, something's happening here, we need more money for this.
So, the big budget has an $800,000 contingency in it. And we don't know whether that's enough or not, but we have an $800,000 contingency in the budget. Right, 800, 850, something like that?
A million.
Yeah.
What was our additional expenditure for social security remodel?
I don't even, what did it cost us, a million bucks? I don't even know.
That, what I believe the entire cost was about 2.8 million, is that correct? 2.8, 2.9 million? We received a check for 900,000 upfront from social, from social security.
My point is, what did, from our original budget, what did we end up spending more than we had budgeted on that one? Just because of things they found? I mean, it's part of the contingency, but...
I don't think it was that much.
It was about 200,000.
Yeah.
On a 2 million-ish project.
Right.
So, I think we're in the range of what would be reasonable.
Yep.
All right, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. Are we done with discussions? All right. Then all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. So, motion passes. We doing okay for time, guys? Keep going. How you feeling?
Yep.
Okay, got one more in a public hearing. Let's just keep going then. All right, thanks, guys. Thanks, Alyssa, for all your work, and Aaron and team for getting back at it. Jacob.
Sir.
What is a luminaire? A light pole.
He thought it was a singing group from the 50s.
Yeah.
It might be.
I thought it was like, you're a rotarian, you're in the, you're in the luminaire. I didn't know what it was. Okay.
Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. I am here tonight to talk about the damaged luminaire or light pole project, depending on your preferred phrasing. Once Tim is able to pull this up, I'll show you kind of what we're talking about. But this project encompasses eight luminaires and two electrical services that have been hit due to vehicle accidents over the last couple of years. You can see the map here. This shows the different locations that we'll be working on. There's one on Ferry. The majority of them, though, are on the Wenatchee Avenue and Mission corridors. Based on my count, there have been about 30 incidents over the last couple of years involving vehicles hitting our traffic and lighting infrastructure. A lot of those are able to be fixed by our maintenance crews, but sometimes the amount of damage exceeds what they're able to do. Typically speaking, you know, if the anchor bolts in our foundations are damaged or the foundation itself is shifted, that's work that exceeds their abilities. And so, that's when we're going to be looking to take it out to a construction project. So, in any case, we've grouped, like I said, 10 of these different locations together, nine locations, 10 different types of work into this small works project. So, just to give you a quick kind of overview on what one of these is going to look like... So, at this location, this is the location on Ferry, which you can see, you can see my cursor. Great. So, this location right here is where the luminaire used to be. Like I said, that's been knocked down, obviously, and so what this, what our contractor would do is come over to, if there's an existing junction box there, they'll be able to pull the conduit from that location to a new luminaire location. If not, they'll have to intercept the conduit, put in a new junction box, and then pull conductor from the junction box to the luminaire. So, new foundation, new light pole, the concrete work associated with the demolition and restoration around that area. So, it turns out to be a fair amount of work at each of these locations. Where we have an electrical service is, so this is an example of an electrical service that we'll be replacing. This is at the intersection of First and Mission. And so, that signal right now is running on a temporary electrical service.
It's been doing that for a long time, hasn't it? Couple of years.
Yeah, and it's got our, it's got our signal and lighting guys pretty concerned. And so, what we'll be doing is going up to basically where that utility pole is on the right side of the image, installing new conduit down. You can see this cartoonish-looking facility or cabinet here that'll encompass the new electrical service, and then we'll be able to pull power from there into our signal cabinet that's right next to it, as well as the luminaire circuits that are around there. So, in any case, that's kind of the work we're looking at. It's, like I said, a variety of different electrical components, sidewalk restoration and so forth. The city received two bids for this project with Midland Electric as the low bid at $168,902. The, most of this is funded through our self-insurance fund, so we collect some revenue each time these incidents happen, and so that's, that'll be funding this project if awarded. At this time, we'd recommend award to Midland Electric, but we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Jacob, how much have we collected? I mean, obviously, the insurance company pays something, but my guess is that it isn't anywhere remotely close to what it's going to cost us to replace.
So, in total, I, unfortunately, I can't answer that question. It is based on, you know, the types of bids that we've received in the past. And so, you know, I think some of the revenues we've been collecting have been based on 2017, 2018 numbers. This now gives us an opportunity to look and say, "Okay, going forward, here's more recent bids that we'll be able to base that on." I'm sure you're right that, you know, the amount we receive doesn't necessarily equate to the amount that it's going to take to fix them. Unfortunately, you know, in order to collect, it's often hard to get out for bids in time to do that before the insurance process is closed down.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Miranda does a pretty good job on these insurance claims in the accounting department. She bird dogs them pretty good, and every time she's trying to squeeze by every penny she can out of those insurance companies, but you're probably right, you know. We got paid three years ago for one of these, and it was probably the right price then and probably isn't the right price now, but...
Yeah, and a couple of these have been out for bid before. They came in ridiculously high and were rejected, and so we saw this as an opportunity to get several of these taken care of at one time.
And this will happen in the next 60, 90 days, you think?
Yeah, we anticipate awarding it in June, assuming that you're okay with that, and then there might be, I anticipate we'll do the groundwork, so get the foundations in place, get the conduit in place. There may be some lead time before the luminaires are actually, are in, but that's, that's a pretty quick process to stand those up once all the groundwork's done.
Great. Any other questions for Jacob? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the City Council award the construction contract for the 2021 damaged luminaire replacement project number SW 20-10 to the Midland Electric, Inc. in the amount of $168,902, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract document.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to award the construction contract for the 2021 damaged luminaire replacement project SW 20-10 to Midland Electric, Inc. in the amount of $168,902, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Big Jacob. So, we do have one public hearing item tonight. This public hearing is regarding the adoption of the Shoreline Master Program. So, we will first hear from staff, Stephen Neunshwander, and then we'll turn over to the council for any questions for Stephen, and then over to the members of the public for any comment they wish to make, and then over to the council for any action they'd be willing to take. and then over to the council for any action they'd be willing to take. Stephen, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. So we do have a public hearing scheduled. Unfortunately, we're going to be requesting a continuance, and I'll explain that. So as I came before you in February, talking about the process of updating our Shoreline Master Program, this is a collaborative effort with the Department of Ecology. They are the ultimate department in the state that adopts the Shoreline Master Program. So we adopt it locally, and then provide it to the state, and then they adopt it as well. And so in that step, so we have completed, the planning commission has held a hearing, and they have formulated a recommendation for you. So we've taken the planning commission recommended draft, along with the entire record of our process, and we've provided that to the Department of Ecology. And so what we're waiting for them, the next step, is that they provide us with an initial determination of consistency with the Shoreline Management Act. And as I explained, and maybe you recall, in February, we have until June of 2021 to adopt this document. Well, so does everybody else that's in our cycle. And so the Department of Ecology is receiving a lot of documents right now. And while we've discussed with our contacts at the Department of Ecology when we had our hearing scheduled, they could not commit that they would get that determination to us in time. So unfortunately, we really can't move forward with a locally adopted document until we receive that initial determination of consistency from the Department of Ecology. And so staff is recommending this evening that you continue this public hearing to 5:15 p.m. on June 10, 2021, and that would be to allow the Department of Ecology additional time to issue their initial determination of consistency regarding our periodic update of our Shoreline Master Program. That's our recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let's start with this. Let's see if the council has any questions either about the plan itself, any of the things in the documents, or the continuance. Nope.
Stephen, is there, we have, help me here. We have until June 10 to get this passed at the local level, as counsel.
Yeah, it's June 20.
But we can't do that until they sign off. So that puts us in the proverbial between the rock and the hard place. Is there penalties that would be incurred because of this or that?
No, so once you continue to June 10, we still have ample time to sign the resolution, package everything up in a final format, and send that to the Department of Ecology well before the deadline.
Okay.
And even if we don't meet that deadline, there are no penalties associated with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen?
I think this time, we're stuck between a rock and a wet place.
So because this is a public hearing, I'll just see if any members of the public would wish to address the council on this item, or we're here, and if they happen to be here or want to participate, this would be a time to do so, or you can participate on June 10. Seeing no members of the public willing to testify, I will then turn over to the council for, it looks like, a motion to continue the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we continue the public hearing on the amendments to the 2021 periodic update of the Shoreline Master Program. That hearing would be scheduled for Thursday, June 10, 2021, beginning at 5:15 p.m. or shortly thereafter.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, and a second by Councilmember Huffaker, to continue the public hearing to 5:15 p.m. on June 10, 2021, to offer additional time for the Department of Ecology to issue additional determination of consistency regarding the City Wenatchee Shoreline Master Program and the periodic updates thereto. Discussion. Hear ye none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you. See you on June 10.
Okay, if not sooner.
Yes.
Mayor's report, I've got three or four things. Spent quite a bit of time over the last week or so. Never thought it would come to trying to figure out where to have a carnival for apple blossom, but we have landed on Lincoln Park. So the carnival will be at Lincoln Park for those eight or nine days. There was some discussion about having it behind the convention center, which is where the carnival company would like to go. Some of the downtown business owners weren't too keen to that idea. So the Chamber had chimed in, and the Downtown Association had chimed in. So we spent some time trying to find some other locations. As you know, Lincoln Park, the children's play area's been gone for a year or so. We're getting ready to spend $3 million or so updating that. So if it got a little bit beat up, it wouldn't be the end of the world. I've been out sort of watching it. There are some kids playing baseball from time to time, but without the play area, it's really not getting a lot of use. So decision's been made to put the carnival there for the week. Unclear how much they're bringing with them due to COVID. They've been doing some smaller carnivals. I don't know which rides that the health district should allow them to bring, but anyhow, the location will be at Lincoln Park. So Jose was excited, so his kids can walk to the carnival.
Are we going to have the school property there available for parking? Are they going to let us use there?
So I think we'll just be parking, you know, so for a festival, and to be honest, a couple of times I went, not last year, the year before, there's eight or 9,000 people there, and they all found a place to park. So there's, again, it will be interesting in some of the neighborhoods, the main street. You know, I park on Crawford, you know, way up and walk through for. The carnival, what's it get? Three or 400 people a night, 500 people a night? I think that area will handle it pretty well. Hopefully, some of the parking, there may be a night or two where there's baseball games and a carnival going on, and that will be sort of a busy time. But again, it was real difficult trying to pick a place that worked for everybody. And, you know, it's normally been at the Town Toyota Center, but that's the vaccination site, and Luke wasn't changing that, so anyhow.
Are we going to have them shut down for curfew just for their residents around them?
In terms of, they'll be done at 10.
10.
Yeah, that's their normal closing time. And I did hear that one of the senior class parents bought the carnival for a couple hours on Friday of graduation. So from 3 to 5, all the seniors will get to go.
Isn't that great?
Yeah.
That is so great.
My God, it would be happy.
Yeah, so hopefully, that still happens. We did get some guidance on that ARP money. So we have 150 pages of regulations to go through. Brad has probably gone through 2/3 of them. I'll read them this weekend. I think the summary is we thought that the rules would be fairly loose and give us a lot of sort of flexibility, and I will tell you, the rules are not very loose, and there's not a lot of flexibility. But as Brad is really good at, we will spend some time trying to figure out how to best use it, and how to make sure that we get all of that money into our region. And we'll keep you posted as we go. Just the overall, the flexibility is not what we had thought it might be. So they're trying to tighten down on some of the spending. But I will spend some of my weekend reading that. As you know, we're working on Saddle Rock remediation with Department of Ecology. We're having a little bit of problems. One of the trails that goes up actually gets onto some neighboring property, and Steve's working on trying to fix that little issue. So we were hoping to be doing the environmental remediation this fall. It will probably have to wait a year. It'll probably be one more year. We gotta just, Steve's got some magic to do, and it's going to take a little while for, it's going to be a longer magic show than we think. So most likely, going to miss this bidding. Psychology was fine with that, so just. Laura, help me out. What else we got? Okay, so who's attending the AWC online stuff? How many voting delegates do we get?
Three.
You tell me, two or three?
Three.
Three? Jim, you fine?
I'm fine.
Linda? Who else? Want to send two, or you want to send just three? We can do just two, I bet, right?
We get three votes even if we have two people?
I don't think so.
Oh, well, then I would do it. I.
You're going to have Jim log on on two accounts.
Vote for the mayor of Comac to continue as our board representative. I would do it.
You need a motion, Tammy, are you good? Okay, you'll bring it, okay. We have signed all the documents on our bond for the sewer bond, so our all-in interest rate with fees on 10 years was 1.17%.
Are the tours our study session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
We meet at the cemetery first, right?
Yes, cemetery first, yep. Yeah, so we're excited to get the bonding done. So that's all done and finished, and all the papers are signed, so there's just got to be money moving hands. But our net present value savings is $1.6 million over 10 years. That's a pretty good, I haven't seen a 1.17% interest rate in a while. I did have my monthly call with the county commissioners last Tuesday. Did tell them about the three major items, that there was a piece of property they wanted us to take, and I told them we wouldn't. We talked about the annexation, which they were none too keen about, and then told them we were no longer going to be doing the contracts for the Department of Health, or for the homeless fund. So that was interesting 25 minutes. But all of them, I think, the right choices for us, and I think, quite frankly, for them as well, so. Yeah, and they did bring us a revenue sharing agreement, which we've read. I think.
But for old station?
What's that?
Old revenue sharing for where?
Just for future annexations. Just for future annexations, which are mostly going to be residential areas, and you and I all know those are not necessarily winners for us. And so for us to take on basically road liabilities, yet they want us to write them a check, and that just, part of that just didn't seem to fit very well. But we'll get back to them in a week or two. Staff's still looking at it, but the timing was interesting. Councilmembers, anything for the good of the order?
The homeless task force is beginning the RFP process next week. We'll be interviewing those agencies that are applying for the funding.
Community Action Council has put in for a couple of the grants, or for money from the Senator Murray's office that put out the grocery list, and putting in for approximately $2 million to build a permanent facility for the food bank and storage and all that sort of thing. So hopefully, that will, something will come of that, but.
I guess they're, they don't have a spot for the food bank right now, so I guess.
No, they have to move out of the lineage where they are now, which was temporary, and then they were with Town Toyota Center, and then moved the lineage, now we've got to move back to Town Toyota Center. But again, that's just on a very temporary basis.
So we got to find them a permanent.
We're still looking for a permanent home, and hopefully, a piece of, you know. The ultimate desire would be to actually buy a piece of property and build a building, and have a place that you can operate and don't have to keep, have a homeless situation.
Your Honor, I won't make the cemetery tour or the firehouse because I'm in those interviews. So, and I need to stick through that.
All right, anything else, councilmembers?
Launching Tax Advisory Committee meets next Wednesday.
Okay.
Quarterly meeting, or?
I think that's what you guys are doing now, isn't it, quarterly? So one of the things that, just as you mentioned, that ARP money, there was a part that was revenue replacement, and we thought we could just look at different funds and say, hey, if the TPA fund was lower in 2020 than 2019, that's one you can fill up. Or hotel motel tax was low, you could fill that one back up. And the regulations say, no, you have to look at the entire city budget. And if your entire city budget is more revenue, then you can't use this money to replace. So that was, again, we're working, it's, again, it's early. We've got three years to spend all that, but Brad's pretty creative, and we will continue to work on ways to try to make those things happen within the letter of the law. But it wasn't quite as simple as we had hoped.
Question, Your Honor, for on the, those funds that Senator Murray's office put out. Is that a statewide thing, or does Cantwell get her pot and?
So this is earmarks.
Gets her pot and?
We don't know. These are earmarks, and for lack of a better word, and they all think they're coming, and so they're all asking for projects so they can all be heroes. And so we put in two or three from the city's perspective. I know everyone is throwing, you know, Mayor of Rock Island asked for $1.2 billion to build a four-lane highway to Quincy. I mean, I'm just telling you, just get the list out and go, so. So I will tell you this, again, love it all to death, but, you know, if, every day, we get an email saying we need your list of projects for this potential funding source. And I don't know how many we've sent off to Schreier and Cantwell and Murray for all the different pots, infrastructure. We are trying to sort of divide and conquer, so we think in the new infrastructure bill will be a lot for water. So the PUD has asked if they could take the lead on regional water and see if they can get, you know, 20, 30, 40 million, 50 million to help with the second source. And I said, yeah, you guys take that one. We'll continue to work on Confluence Parkway. It's not all just start, you know, let's think about and be logical about who's asking for what, as opposed to just asking for $1.2 billion for a four-lane, and, yeah. Which made the Transportation Council meeting today very interesting.
Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the PUD for the Riverfront Park.
Oh, good.
Advisory Committee meeting. So it's going to be a walk and talk, and talk about the projects that they're proposing for that revitalization of the Pibus to, what is that, Fifth Street?
Yep. Yeah, I'm glad you're doing that. Thank you for being involved in doing that. That should be, hopefully, a great process. All right, anything else for the good of the order? So we'll see you next Thursday at the cemetery at 3 o'clock. All right, we're adjourned.